This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of North Haven.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our March Board of Selectment meeting. I'm Mike Frieda, North Haven's First Selectman. I'm joined this evening by our Third Selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buemi. Our Second Selectman, Mr. William Piper, is not feeling well tonight, so he will not be joining us tonight. He called a little bit earlier. He has some stomach virus, so he extends his regrets, because he really wanted to be here tonight. Because every year, this Girl Scout program is a very big thing for us in town in terms of honoring our Girl Scouts. And, to that point, I'd like to ask everyone to stand, and I'd like to ask the Girl Scouts to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance... To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very well done. Very well done. Thank you. Item number two on tonight's agenda: Are there any public comments tonight? Seeing none, we'll move to item number three. And I'd like to tee this up by telling everyone here... Now, ladies and gentlemen, I have to tell you, there's been a rumor at Town Hall for decades, and that rumor is that there's a friendly ghost in Town Hall.
He turned your phone on.
He's always on our side, so thank you for that.
Okay, take two. We're on live TV here.
So tonight, we're going to start by honoring the wonderful Girl Scouts. And I have a proclamation here, prepared by Valerie, and I'd like to read it. I'd like to take the time, because this is a very important night for us here in North Haven.
One of our favorite nights.
One of our favorite nights.
He loves the Girl Scouts.
So ladies and gentlemen... There's that ghost again. March 12th marks the 113th anniversary of the Girl Scouts of the USA, founded by Juliette Gordon Lowe in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia. Girl Scouts has reached close to 10 million girls and adults in 146 countries, with many, many in our community. More than 50 million women in America today enjoyed Girl Scouts during their childhood, and that number keeps on growing as the Girl Scouts of the USA continue to inspire, to challenge, and to empower girls everywhere. Girl Scouts continues to follow the mission that is at its very core. Girl scouting builds girls of courage, confidence, and character who make the world a better place. Girl scouting plays an active role in increasing girls' awareness of the opportunities available to them in science, in technology, in engineering, math, and the arts, as well as other fields that can expand their horizon and take an active role in supporting all girls, their families, and the communities in time of need. Through the Girl Scout leadership experience, girls gain knowledge and develop skills that will serve them a lifetime so that they may contribute to their communities. Throughout its long and distinguished career in history, Girl scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of character, conduct, and patriotism. Girl scouting connects girls to a world of possibilities in a positive and inclusive, girl-led environment. An environment where girls are inspired to discover their passions and are empowered to reach their highest potential. Through Girl scouting, girls gain bravery, independence, and integrity to make their communities and the world a better place. So tonight, I'm Michael J. Frieda, Chief Executive of the Town of North Haven. By virtue of the authority invested in me by the citizens of North Haven and the Town Charter, I hereby proclaim March 9th through March 15th as Girl Scout Week here in North Haven, Connecticut. And we acknowledge with overwhelming pride and enthusiasm the many girls and women of our town who dedicate themselves to the Girl Scout promise. Congratulations. Now, what we'd like to do is maybe have the Girl Scouts come up, and Sally and I will take a picture with everybody and present the proclamation. All right, so... Let's give them a round of applause, ladies and gentlemen.
Hi, take care. Thank you. Yeah, sure. So we're doing Mr. Katz's...
Well, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. And thank you again to the Girl Scouts here in town, the Girl Scouts of America. So now, item number three on our agenda is a very special, another very special moment. It'll be poignant in many respects for some of us, and I'd like to tee it up and then turn it over to Sally. So in front of us, we have the Katz family. Sherman Katz was a remarkable town resident who regularly attended down through the years almost every town meeting, Board of Selectment meetings, the town meetings, and he often stood at that podium. In fact, he stood at that podium every time that he came up.
Most Board of Finance meetings, too.
Most Board of Finance meetings.
Which, that's saying something.
So the history of Sherman and I started when I first came into office, not as the First Selectman, but about a year and a half before that, I was asked to be a member of the Board of Finance while I was still in my corporate business career. And I've said this before, I will never forget it. Sherman Katz sat in that seat, right there, the first seat in the first row. I walked through that door the first time, he came up to me, he said, "I've heard an awful lot about you, Mike Frieda." And he said, "I like the fact that there's somebody coming from business, or who is in business, to sit on the Board of Finance." We became fast friends. Now, Sherman didn't always agree with our position here at Town Hall in terms of some of the things that happened down through the years, but he always presented his opinion in a very respectful and sometimes a very firm way. We have had a great deal of respect for Sherman. Now, this past December, at a menorah lighting on the Green, I had sent Sherman a couple of messages to see if he was going to be able to come, not realizing he was in the hospital. We did a video. We filmed the video. Reverend, I'm sorry, Rabbi Hecht filmed the video. We sent it to Sherman. And we hope, I'm not sure if he saw it, but we hope he did, telling him how much we loved him. Now, at the last Board of Selectment meeting, Sally Buemi came up with an outstanding idea. That podium there, she asked if we would dedicate that podium to Mr. Katz. And of course, Bill Piper and I were right on board with that. I thought that was a great idea. So tonight, we're going to be doing the unveiling. I'd like to turn it over to Sally to say a few words, and we'll do the unveiling. Sally?
Yes, thank you. Well, I had great respect for Mr. Katz. He and I talked on the phone quite a bit over the years, and, you know, he came to every meeting. He made his, like Mike said, he made his positions very clear and very respectful. He's a great North Havener, a great American, a veteran. And I can't think of anyone more appropriate to have our public comment podium named after than Mr. Sherman Katz. So I appreciate you and Bill supporting my idea. And you mentioned the menorah lighting. It was Mr. Katz, really, who initiated and inspired that way back in the beginning. It had to be eight or nine years ago, I don't know, the years...
Nine years.
Yeah. And when you and I were there with Mr. Katz and maybe just a half a dozen other people, and it has since, with his continued support, grown into a major event for our town, and we're very thankful that... That is just one thing that he has inspired in town. And I know that he inspired many citizens out there watching TV to vote and to pay attention and to be active citizens, because your local government is really the best democracy deal you've got going. And if you don't pay attention and don't stay informed, then you're not participating. And that's what Mr. Katz believed in. He believed in paying attention and participating and inspiring people to come out and vote. So why don't we do the unveiling of the plaque?
And we'll ask the Katz family to stand with us as we have...
Yes.
So this is the podium, ladies and gentlemen, where Mr. Sherman Katz always stood. And if we could do the unveiling, I'd like Mrs. Sally Katz to stand with me here, a woman whom I've always had great respect for. We miss him. We miss him greatly. And I know we spoke the other day, and I know how much you miss him, Sally. So here it is. And Sally, I'll ask you to read it.
Okay, there we go. It says, let me just get here, "A memory of Sherman Katz, a dedicated public commentator, Town of North Haven, 2025."
And Mike and family, it's our hope that this dedication, this is Mike Katz, Sherman's son, that this plaque on this podium will be an enduring and lasting legacy to the memory of our dear friend, Mr. Sherman Katz.
And most importantly, I hope others will be inspired to come to the podium and participate. That is the best way you could honor his memory.
Mike, would you say a few words?
My dad has been involved with the town since I was a kid, so that goes without saying that he's been there for a while. And for all those years that Mike has been, even anywhere in town, he always spoke with you on a daily basis. And if he didn't, he said, "I probably called you up the day before." Thank you both. I've known you both for many years, Sally. And you've been so helpful in the years with my dad, learning about the politics that goes on and being part of it. As a regular citizen, he was able to stand up and say what he thought was good, bad, or just his idea, and you certainly listened every time. It was very nice of you and everybody else in the Town Council. Thank you very much. And thank you very much for doing this for the family.
I have to say that this plaque was donated by Arnold's Jewelers and engraved, so thank you to Larry Lazaroff and Arnold's Jewelers, conveniently located in the center of North Haven.
And I will tell you, no matter what happens, Larry was always there for everybody. He was another guy. He was always there.
Larry and Arnold's Jewelers sponsors a lot of events and programs here in North Haven. So we thank him for the plaque.
Thank you, guys. The family's going to take a couple pictures of that plaque there.
You're going to break the camera.
No, it's just a picture, Dave.
Item number four. We have a poet laureate out here tonight, and it'll be an introduction by Sally Buemi, and then we're going to hear a poem. So I want to turn now this over to you, Sally. Go right ahead.
Yes, thank you, Michael. First, I want to thank all those who applied for the poet laureate position very much. The poet laureate selection committee was very impressed with the qualified candidates, and we were amazed by the wide array of poetry that we read. It was a long and difficult decision, and so we thank all those who applied. It was a very difficult decision, but very soon you're going to meet our new poet laureate, and so I hope you'll agree we made the right choice. I just want to mention my colleagues who served on the selection committee. There were four of us, besides myself. There was Nancy Moss Rikusen, Michael Fletcher, who is the Chair of the Library Board, and last but not least, there was Gabriella Brand. She is our former poet laureate, and she was also our first poet laureate, and she did a fantastic job. She really set the bar quite high for all future poet laureates, and I'm confident that our new poet laureate will meet those challenges. I also need to acknowledge Brittany Person, a library employee. She is a reference librarian at our town library. She organized the entire application process, organized the applications and all of the meetings. And she just did a great job and worked very hard to ensure a very smooth selection process. So I felt obligated to mention Brittany. So without further ado, let me introduce you, the Town of North Haven, to our new 2025 poet laureate, Dr. Elizabeth Luoma. Beth is here tonight with her husband Jeff and her two children, James and Ruth, who are both students at Green Acres Elementary School. Beth graduated from Shelton High School as the valedictorian. She has a bachelor's degree in biology from the College of Holy Cross, and she was also, again, the valedictorian. And Beth has a PhD in cell biology from Yale University. Dr. Luoma is currently the Executive Director at the Center for Teaching and Learning at Sacred Heart University. So I will now turn it over to you, Beth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, I'm going to mimic Sally here and start with many words of thanks to begin. So first, thank you to the Board for inviting me here tonight as the second poet laureate for the Town of North Haven. It is a true honor, and I'm excited to get started in this role and service to our community. My thanks also goes to the selection committee for their work in reviewing applications and interviewing candidates, and especially to Ms. Sally Buemi, who I learned during my interview and our phone conversations was instrumental in bringing this program to North Haven. So not all towns in Connecticut get to have a poet laureate, and we do, and I'm very much proud of that. So thank you, Sally. I also want to thank Gabriella Brand, our inaugural North Haven poet laureate, for her dedicated service to North Haven and the wisdom she has already shared with me in preparing for this role. I'm looking forward to picking up that baton and carrying on from the great work that she has done. And then finally, I also want to thank Brittany, because on the receiving end, as an applicant, she was phenomenal in her communication and so well organized. So really appreciate everything that she's made easy in terms of, through the selection process, but also now partnering with the library already with events coming forward. So I was asked to read a poem tonight, and I've chosen to read the poem that I wrote specifically for this position. It's called "Poetry for Good." And to me, it serves as a mission statement, a charge for me in this role over the next two years. So Mr. Frieda, at the last Board of Selectment meeting, and yes, I did watch the recording, you shared with our newly-selected youth poet laureate Gavin how important poetry is as we think about how tumultuous our current society feels right now. And I couldn't agree more. Poetry is an opportunity to remind ourselves of our shared humanity, of the dignity of every person, of the feelings and emotions across our diverse lived experiences. As an educator, I see poetry as a true opportunity to learn from one another and to better understand one another. And so with that, I offer "Poetry for Good." What good are letters on a page, lines, dashes, and curves that suffer the stage, gathering in groups of worldly cluster to translate the feelings one word can muster? What good, then, are words in a phrase? They connect disparate dots to form possible ways of expressing, of knowing, of hearing each other, of relationship, of wisdom, of sister and brother? What good, then, are phrases aligned, in columns justified, or sometimes maligned? They reveal our stories, our heartaches, too. They tell us what's real or what's undeniably untrue. What good, then, is poetry as an art? A verse, of rhythm, of sonnet, of heart? It unleashes our souls, our desires, our claims. It revels in our identities, our personhood, our names. Poetry begins with individual letters, with As and with Bs that assemble, as letters to the world, entire symphonies. Taken together, we all should agree, "For good is the best use of our poetry." And if I could, I'd also like to offer two invitations to the community while I have everyone's attention. The first is that the North Haven Memorial Library will be offering a welcoming reception on Tuesday, April 1st, and it is not an April Fool's joke, it is actually happening. It's at 6:00 PM. And it's an opportunity, really, for me to meet with the community. I'll share a little bit about my poetry and my vision for this role, but really, I want to hear from our citizens. I want to hear what you're hoping for out of this role. I have some ideas working across ages, how we work with our youth, how we work with our teenagers in terms of, as we think about mental health and writing poetry and processing together, adult writing groups, all of those things. But I really want to hear the ideas from the community. And the second invitation is to reach out to me directly. So I just started a new email account. It's called northhavenpoet@gmail.com. So northhavenpoet, all in one word, at gmail.com. And what I'm hoping to do in the coming months is to write a poem specifically about what's special about North Haven. And I say this because my family, we've been living here for just about eight years, and at one time, we were brand new. And we learned North Haven to be a special place, but I'm thinking about what it means to be that walking community and lay out everything that we love about this town as we invite new members into our community. So any ideas of that thing about North Haven that you want to make sure makes it into that verse or stanza, I invite you to write to me again at northhavenpoet@gmail.com and share your ideas with me.
Great.
Thank you very much, Beth.
We have the Board's welcoming. I have a gift for you that we will present. It is a pen set on a marble base, and it says, "North Haven Poet Laureate, 2025." So this will be for you.
Oh, thank you so much.
Also donated by Larry Lazaroff.
Conveniently located. For a picture, yeah. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Want to do a picture?
Okay.
Do you mind if we do one with the family as we mention?
We'll do it in the front there with the logo behind you.
Could we ask the theater or someone to take a picture on the podium?
Sure. Do you want us with you? I'll go on the side, excuse me. Okay, we look forward to your future.
So ladies and gentlemen, to the poem, the beautiful poem that Beth just recited, we always must keep in mind that words do matter. The composition of words, the way they're put together, can really make or break a conversation, can really help weave the threads of a wonderful community together or disrupt the threads of a community. So Beth, I thank you very much. Words do matter, and on the other side of it, words can be daggers also. So we appreciate what you're doing. We support you 1,000%. And we'll have many events this year that, if you'd like, we'd be delighted to have you at. Thank you.
Well, lots of good ceremonies tonight.
Yes, very nice. All right, so now moving to the business of the town in terms of this Board of Selectment. Item number five. The approval of the Board of Selectment meeting minutes of February 6, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second it. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number six. Normally, I'd have some slides here, but I'd just like to make a couple of announcements, one of which I think is very, very important, or really, both are. So about three months ago, the Lieutenant Governor called me, Susan Beisowitz. And the state is honoring World War II veterans. So I'd like to read you what the press release says. "We in North Haven are participating with this. We support it." Lieutenant Governor Beisowitz is talking to mayors and First Selectmen all across the state to see who would be on board with this. And here is how it is explained. "Connecticut to honor living World War II veterans in a 2025 ceremony." North Haven, this is in conjunction with the Lieutenant Governor, "North Haven is seeking living World War II veterans..." "North Haven is seeking living World War II veterans residing in our community who have served at any time from December 7th, 1941 to December 31st, 1946. In a heartfelt effort to honor and recognize the courage and sacrifices of living World War II veterans, Connecticut Lieutenant Governor Susan Beisowitz, in collaboration with the Veterans Affairs Commissioner, Ron Welch, and Major General Francis Yvonne of the Connecticut National Guard, announced a commemorative ceremony. This event will be held on Monday, May 19th, 2025, at 11:00 AM at the Governor William O'Neill State Armory, located at 360 Broad Street in Hartford. The ceremony marks the 80th anniversary of the conclusion of World War II, a pivotal moment in the history that ended in September of 1945. The event aims to recognize and thank members of the greatest generation whose dedication and bravery shaped the very freedom and democracy enjoyed today." So once again, North Haven is seeking living World War II veterans who reside in our community, who have served at any time from the dates I mentioned earlier, December 7th, 1941, to December 31st, 1946. You can please contact my office at 203-239-5321, extension 680. Or you can email me with the veteran's name, including their branch of service and their age, no later than April 30th, 2025. We, in my office, I will share it with Lieutenant Governor Susan Beisowitz in her office to ensure that all veterans are properly honored. This is a major ceremony. I've been at this, ladies and gentlemen, in the past, and it's really something to see. So if those watching maybe missed some of the content, in summary, you can call my office at 203-239-5321. It will guide you through the process. Thank you very much.
If I may also add to that, I also received a call from the Lieutenant Governor at my home, and among other things, we discussed this event. And she had recalled my tribute to World War II veterans that I organized in 2015 for the 70th anniversary of the end of World War II. You might recall that day very well. You made sure there were all those really nice chairs out front. I had 12 World War II veterans, including my dad, and you made sure they all had very comfy chairs in the front row there, in front of the reviewing stand. And it was a great day, and she had recalled that. So she reached out to me and gave me some, and asked me to, gave me some ideas on how to locate World War II vets in town through the assessor's office and other means, and then to provide your office with that. So I told her I would do that. Obviously, with it being the 80th anniversary, these were talking about people at least 98 to 100 years old. Now, when I did the 70th in 2015, as I said, we had 12 World War II veterans, including my dad and his friend, Mr. Howard Loopy, who you know, who was a member of the Board of Selectmen, and 10 others. And all 12, including my dad, have since passed. So it was really great to have that event for them on the 70th. And the round of applause that they received as they came around the green, I hear was the loudest applause that we've ever had at a North Haven Memorial Day parade. So I immediately told the Lieutenant Governor that I would do my part to try to locate folks, because not everybody, as popular as our show is, Michael here, you know, not everybody watches. So I will do my part to try to locate World War II veterans as I promised the Lieutenant Governor and pass them to you.
Very good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Also, I want to mention three very important dates. This is a budget season that we're in. We're faced with a very difficult situation with revow. My colleagues and I, all across the state, we kind of dread revow. And in North Haven, property values have jumped significantly. So this budget process is very, very important. And I hope everybody comes out. Want to give you some dates. If you can attend, I think it would be very important. Of course, these meetings will be televised also on NHTV here. So on March 19th, which is a Wednesday night, that'll be the Board of Finance meeting. That's the first key date I'd like to mention from this point forward. We've already had workshop sessions. We've already had department heads in front of us, and each department presented to the Board of Finance. Before they got to the Board of Finance, they met with myself and Rich Monaco, our Director of Finance and Administration. So that Board of Finance meeting will be very, very important. The second date, there's a public hearing on Monday, April 7th, at 7:00 PM at the North Haven High School. It'll be there that I personally will be presenting the budget to take everyone through the impact of revow, what we're looking at in terms of a mill rate reduction, because there will be a mill rate reduction. And that's where we host the meeting. And also, in addition to the presentation, we get public feedback and public comment in terms of how the public feels about the budget. And then the annual town meeting is Monday, May 12th, at 7:00 PM, about the budget again. There'll be a referendum in May. Val the exact date on the referendum.
Exact date of the referendum is the 20th of May.
20th of May. This form of government for new residents is different from a council form of government. It is a town meeting form of government, where the residents have an impact in terms of feedback in a referendum form of government, where the residents actually vote yes or no. In the council form of government, it's seven or nine council members who make the decision on the budget. Here, it's the public. And yet, you know, we sometimes are very disappointed that there's not a lot of turnout there. And, you know, I think it averages maybe 8% for a referendum, maybe 10. Sometimes it's four. So we'd love to see really a lot of turnout here because everybody is going to be impacted by this in some way, shape, or form. So the more people that can speak up, speak out, offer their opinions, and come to the polls, because you make the decision on this, ladies and gentlemen. And that's the really important part of this government. It's a people government. Where the people have an impact. The people can determine how they want to see the government go. In this case, the budget. Thank you.
Yeah, and if I may, I just want to stress that the budget that will be recommended by the Board of Finance on March 19th is exactly that. It's a recommended budget. So the April public hearing, in my opinion, is a very important date. Maybe in certain respects, even more important than the budget town meeting because the comments at the public hearing, at least in theory, may have an impact when the Board of Finance meets again in mid-April to finalize their recommendation. And if recent history is any indication, sometimes there wasn't much change, but sometimes there was significant change. It was a combination of comments made at the public hearing as well as some updated information, maybe updated revenue information. So there can be change. It's not etched in stone at that March 19th meeting. So I really cannot stress enough the importance of the April public hearing. And just think about those terms, "public hearing." This is where you, the public, have your opportunity to be heard. So I really urge you to attend that. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. All right, item number seven.
Yes.
Go ahead, Sally.
Sure. "We have to consider and act upon a resolution to call for a special town meeting of the town meeting, of the town of North Haven," I assume you mean.
"A special meeting of the town meeting." That's the way it was phrased.
Okay. "Special meeting of the town meeting to consider and vote upon whether to designate a second polling place location for the conduct of early voting in connection with the general election to be held on November 4th, 2025, and any primary to be held in connection with the aforementioned general election." We did this last year. So we have to do this every year to decide. I guess the theory might be based, because early voting is relatively new, based on early voting turnout, we would then maybe decide that one location isn't enough. Our first experiment with early voting was in the August primary for the Republican senator for the 2024 election, and very few showed up. But then, of course, with the general election being a presidential year, thousands showed up. So now we have a municipal election. I mean, we have 85% turnout total in the presidential years, and we have been averaging, what, 34, 35% unfortunately in the municipal elections. I think we're pretty set that we're going to have to change the location in presidential years. But I don't think we need to change the number of locations.
We're going to ask Jen Vandecourt to come up. She's here. Jennifer's our registrar. She's on the front lines on this and knows an awful lot about this.
Good evening, Adrianne. We are going to be moving the early voting location to the REC Center. Guidelines have changed in the middle of early voting with the presidential election, and the room that we held it in downstairs did not hold. We needed more workers, and it just does not have the capacity for more workers. So we figured, moving forward, the REC Center. So whether it's busy or not busy, we have enough workers in the room.
Yeah, and I think it's good to have it set as that permanent location because when you start for presidential, it's going to be here, and for non-presidential, the early voting will be there. You know, that's a little too much, and someone might go to the wrong place and then get discouraged from, oh, the heck with it.
Absolutely.
So we don't want that. We want, I think, one steady... Exactly. So I applaud your decision. I think it's the right decision. And so changing it to the REC Center, do you think the one... Because this is really about number of places.
You can explain, Jen, why the second location option? Because you're... So this is the vote for a second location also.
Oh, yes. We don't need a second location at all. The REC Center can handle a big election for early voting or even a small one, where they have the big room for a huge election, and then we can take a small room so we're not tying Andy's hands with the REC Centers. They have a lot of other events going on there as well.
So what Jennifer just stated, this will be stated at the town meeting. But because of the Secretary of State rules and regulations, because this is a town meeting form of government, that'll be the recommendation, and then the public will vote on that recommendation.
Right. Okay. So we, as a board, are not... Sometimes we, for special meetings, we, as a board, vote on a recommendation, but not in this case. So we just are talking about it tonight and hearing from the registrar and then calling.
You do not need a town meeting to decide where the primary early voting location will be. That is up to the registrars to make that determination, and they get that certified. They then go through the process and certify that location through the Secretary of the State. What we're mandated to do right now because of our town meeting form of government is to decide by the people whether they feel a second location is necessary in addition to the REC Center. So that's all that we will be bringing to the town meeting, and that's all that will be voted on.
And I would like to add, adding a second location for early voting would be very expensive.
Right.
So in a budget season right now, it would not be a very good idea.
Right.
All right, Jen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Okay, so I'll do eight, which is the resolution to call. Okay. So I will move, resolve the Board of Selectmen hereby call for a special meeting of the town meeting to be held Tuesday, March 25th, 2025, at 5:30 PM in the upstairs conference room number one of the North Haven Memorial Town Hall, 18 Church Street, North Haven, Connecticut, to consider and vote upon whether to designate a second polling location for the conduct of early voting in connection with the general election to be held on November 4th, 2025, and any primary to be held in connection with the aforementioned general election. So I will make that motion to call that meeting.
Okay, we have a motion, and I'll make the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Just so people know, only two members of the Board of Selectmen are necessary for a quorum and an effective vote.
That's right.
So we miss Bill, but two is all we need.
All right, I'll start with this one.
Sure.
Item number nine, resignations and appointments. The resignation of Jane Andrews of 401 Clintonville Road from the Board of Assessment Appeals, term to expire November 30th, 2027. Jane cannot do it anymore, so...
Excuse me.
So we have a motion and a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sally?
I'll move for the appointment of Colleen Brown, 113 Bailey Road, to the Board of Assessment Appeals to fill the unexpired term of Jane Andrews, term to expire November 30th, 2027.
Okay, I'll second that.
I'm glad we're filling it right away because this is a busy time for them.
Right.
Now, this is an elected position.
Yeah, she'll... Colleen will fill the unexpired term.
Right. Yes, Jane resigned, and we're filling it right away. So I'm just trying to make the point that this is an elected position, not an appointed one. And therefore, we have to fill it within 60 days, which we're certainly doing. And also, by charter, we have to fill it with, because it's elected, with someone of the same party affiliation.
Yes.
That's the distinction between elected and appointed. Okay?
All right. I'll make the motion to appoint Brandy Mandato, who happens to be here this evening. Brandy, thanks for coming. 56 South Avenue to the Economic Development Commission, term to expire December 31st, 2027.
I will enthusiastically second that appointment. We have Brandy's resume in our packet, and it is a very impressive resume indeed. And her background and her work experience makes her duly qualified for this very important commission. So again, I enthusiastically second this appointment, and I am confident she will contribute positively to this commission.
Okay. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sally?
I'll make a motion for the appointment of Cynthia Golia, 12 Stanton Road, to the Conservation Commission, term to expire August 31st, 2028.
All right, I'll second that.
Yep. Cynthia's very active in the...
Garden Club.
Garden Club. She'll do a great job. And I noticed she's a U. How many U's are on the Conservation Commission? Do we know?
Give me a minute, please.
Give me a minute, please.
Sure. Yeah, she does a great job with the garden club.
Yeah, she's a leader.
I've been to her, her house, and, you know, door knocking, and her lawn is beautiful. So...
Currently, three. This would make four.
Four U's, and, okay. You know, I, again, enthusiastically support her. I think she's a great appointment. And I know that this administration made a commitment quite a few years ago to get a lot more U's unaffiliateds on our boards and commissions, because they are, after all, the majority of registered voters.
And this, the appointed, the appointed boards are the only way the unaffiliates can be part of the government. 48% of registered voters in North Haven are unaffiliates.
Yes, and a quarter each are Democrats and Republicans. But if, you know, because now this will mean four U's, which would be well over 50%, maybe next time we could consider a D, because there's just one D, I think. So, but again, I always supported your advocacy for the U's, and I agree. They can't really get on a, on a elected board, so I thought that, you know, your decision to really advocate for U's on the appointed boards years ago was a good one. And I support this, but next time, we'll have to look a little closer, and I think Cynthia will do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion, second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sally, next.
Bond releases, we have P. 2310 and P. 2201, 576 Washington Avenue. Amount of original bond, 21,500. Current balance and bond, 21,500. I will make a motion to release the entire bond balance of 21,500 with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right, I'll second that. And if there's no further discussion, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sally, you can take the next one.
I'll make a motion to approve the property tax refunds reflected on our agenda.
Okay, I'll second that. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item number 12, the next regular meeting of this Board of Selectmen will be Thursday, April 3rd, here at 6:30 in the upstairs conference room of North Haven Town Hall. We're at the point now, public comment. Mr. Gabriel.
Hey, Tim Gabriel, Renee Lane. Great to have a meeting where there's poetry, and there's Girl Scouts, and stuff like that. This is like, I think people would come out to these all the time, if we had like one that was as fun as this. Just had a question about the town meeting, because it seems like, and I know that they did this last time too, where there was, there was a call for a vote. It doesn't seem like between the registrar and the selectman that there's like a lot of support for having another room. You said that like, we could probably do it in another room. What's the reason for calling it?
Well, this is, this is, we have to, we have to call the town meeting for a second location, a second setup, another poll place.
Just to open one up, you mean, or?
Val gave...
The Secretary of State rules state that you have, this is mandated by them, that we have to bring it to the town meeting, because this is our form of government, to ask the people if they feel we need a second location. So we have to ask that in the form of town...
Okay, so every time, we're going to need to ask if they, if we want a second one?
Yes. In their infinite wisdom, they feel that this is necessary to do every year. So we did it last year, now we're doing it again this year. We'll probably have to do it again the following year.
Okay.
So it's just, it's very, it's just basically, yes.
All right, makes sense.
Yes. And we already determined through the registrars that, you know, there doesn't need to be a second location, because the only second location could be Town Hall, and if you can't make it to the REC Center, you probably can't make it to the Town Hall either.
The other thing that comes into play here, Tim, is, and Jennifer referenced it, it was chaos downstairs at Town Hall?
Oh, I know. I voted there last year. It was cramped, everybody did a great job, but...
This is a much larger facility over there.
Yeah.
So their recommendation would be, we don't need another location. Now, the residents could vote that down and demand another vote, another location. That's what Val's trying to say.
Right, it's the number. Like, the, last year, we voted not to have a second location. Now, I, like I said in my opening comments when we were discussing this, I think the theory behind it is that as early voting may or may not get more popular, they, meaning the Secretary of State and their regulators, they want the...
Just the option.
The option to vote every year, based on what happened last time, you know, to have a second location. That's a separate issue from changing the location, which the registrar has unilateral authority to do. And she's already told us that she's changing the location permanently, no matter what election it is, to the REC Center. So that's, we're not mandated to have a town meeting to determine where it is. She and the other registrar have the authority to do that, but we're required every year to decide, to let the people tell us or decide if we want a second location.
Right. This is strictly just early voting.
So hopefully, hopefully people will follow her recommendation and mine, and Michael's recommendation, not to have a second location. I think the REC Center will be sufficient, even in, even as a single location in presidential years.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, Nancy Barrett, 1 Cresview Drive. I just had a quick question, because this was brought to my attention recently, and I don't remember what the history of this was, but what was the reason that the fire and police program, or fire-police program, was terminated? I know it was active for a while, and it certainly had a function in our town, and then it was just...
What program is that? I'm not sure.
Fire police.
The fire police.
Oh.
Remember, they used to direct traffic and things?
Yeah, that was a decision made by the Fire Commission, based on a recommendation of the police chief. Some of them were converted over to the CERT team. The CERT team is really, it was much more robust in terms of numbers, and so they direct a lot of traffic, they're at places like the fairgrounds. So in effect, some of the fire police had aged out and retired, and I was aware of this too, and I supported it, that we, through the Fire Department, offered them to join CERT. CERT now is the predominant community emergency response team. In many respects, it's taken over some of the fire police.
Yeah, it just, it was brought to my attention, because it seemed to me that there were some functions of the volunteer fire police, many of whom were volunteer firefighters in our town, that had access to the volunteer fire vehicles that could serve functions that the CERT team couldn't, such as if there is, you know, say, an accident or something like that, that they could utilize these volunteer fire vehicles to, say, block traffic. And so that's a little different from directing traffic at our fairgrounds, and I just thought that it really is kind of a no, no-cost way to actually supplement not only our police department, but also our fire department, and really not tie up our career firefighters in terms of blocking traffic.
So that was their decision, so...
Okay, so I might bring it before the Fire Commission. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, now we'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.